The Honorable Councilmember Mary Norwood. Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda? Moved by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Ishay Collins. Please open the vote.
One moment. Vote is open? Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The agenda is adopted.
May we have a motion to approve the minutes? Seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Mary Norwood. Please open the vote.
Vote is open? Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The minutes have been adopted.
Colleagues, the 2025 draft objectives have been distributed to you via email and is included in your committee packets. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the 2025 goals and objectives. Moved by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Ishay Collins. Please open the vote.
Vote is open? Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The 2025 goals and objectives have been adopted.
We are now ready for our first public speaker, Mr. Chris Brown, followed by DeJuan Robinson. Ms. Susan Douglas. Mr. Devin Franklin.
Good afternoon, councilfolk. My name is Devin Franklin. As you all know, I am Senior Movement Policy Counsel for the Southern Center for Human Rights here in Atlanta, and I'm here today to speak to a few matters related to community-oriented engagement events and assemblies that my team and I at the Southern Center have hosted over the past few weeks with the intention of amplifying the voices of local residents within governing structures. The first thing that I would like to bring your attention to is an event that we are hosting tomorrow. It is our annual Justice Day event. Justice Day 2025 will be held tomorrow, Tuesday, February 25th, from 8:30 to 3:00 p.m. at the Central Presbyterian Church located on Washington Street, directly across the Capitol. The event will be keynoted by State Representative Tanya Miller, and it is an important opportunity for interested members of the community to learn from policy experts, to engage with lawmakers, and to advocate for legal reform. Additionally, I would like to update you all as well as it pertains to the People's Process Day of Reporting that we held last Tuesday at the Auburn Avenue Research Library. That People's Process, of course, is a process. It's a series of public events designed to generate public input as it pertains to the issues going on at the Fulton County Jail, as it pertains to the Department of Justice's findings report, and the consent decree. We want to make sure that public input is heard and factored into these solutions, as we always believe that those who are closest to the problem are also closest to the solutions. And there are certainly a great number of problems within the Fulton County Jail. Some of those have been amplified by the fact that this body approved a lease of its jail to Fulton County without first requiring some showing of ability to keep individuals safe. At that event, we were able to hear from formerly incarcerated people, the family of formerly incarcerated persons, and policy experts about the dangers that exist within the Fulton County Jail and the things that not only those with the county, but those with the city could do to eliminate those issues. Councilwoman Collins, I know that you attempted to make it last week, and you had some trouble getting there, but we appreciate your response as it pertains to it. This is particularly important at this point in time because as we consider issues at the Fulton County Jail, there's also pending legislation at the Capitol, SB 7, which would, of course, allow for the county to take over your jail without proper compensation. And it would allow for a continued extraction and exploitation, rather, of harms from Fulton County to your facilities. I suspect that there may already be some paper in some form that is hanging about that would allow for the sale of ACDC to Fulton County, and I'm here to let you know that we will speak against any such effort. And I look forward to engaging with you all more about this in the future. Thank you.
Mr. DeJuan Robinson?
Thank you, and please forgive my tardiness. For many years, I've seen many boards that we have. I had a year of time too, I'm sorry. For many years, I've seen certain boards that we have, and I have thought that some of them was a joke because of certain people that were on the boards, how they run the boards, and not having the gumption to speak out and speak to truth. And often those years, I haven't had much time to join such boards, but I want this to be known today that I am offering myself a service to boards such as the Atlanta Citizen Review Board, and there's other boards, but this board is very near and dear to me because I stand on the side of police and community as one of the first graduating members of the Atlanta Police Academy, Citizen Police Academy, and the youngest in my class that had to jump that wall and to drag that 100-pound dead dummy across. And to see my class react in the shoot, don't shoot in that class. And so this board, I feel, has not functioned its best since I've been around in Atlanta. And we need someone that not only that will hold the police accountable, but someone who can speak to the community, and I feel that I'm best qualified for that because I come from the inner-city public housing and someone who's gone to college and graduated and have come back to his hometown and been fighting for justice since I've been back. Someone that doesn't hate the police and could talk to the police and talk to the public, that is imperative. Someone that can speak to white, Asian, Hispanic, gay, straight, it doesn't matter. We have to have that, and we got to start playing games when it comes to public safety. And the Citizen Review Board, and there's other boards that we must take very seriously. And you got to have someone in there that's going to stand tall and someone that's going to tell the police what's hard to tell them when it's needed, someone that's going to tell the community what's hard when it's needed. And I just think it's high time for us to stand on the right side of that, and we got to get this thing right, and it needs some leadership that's bold. It needs members on the board that's bold and not playing games. How can it be called the Atlanta Citizen Review Board when you don't have real, true natives of Atlanta on the Citizen Review Board? How hypocritical is that? And I just think with you guys here today, I think that you guys can help get this right because I believe in you guys regardless of I come down here and sometimes have to speak against it. I still think, and I've said this numerous times, I think this is the most intelligent body that we have. Sometimes you guys may have your differences with each other and whomever else, but together, I still think that this is the best board, best group of councilmembers together, and this is what have always been the fabric of Atlanta, white, black, gay, straight. It have always been the fabric of Atlanta, man, for us to work together. Too many things that divide us, but when it come to treating citizens right and all that, like, I too have had to call 911 so many times. What's happening to do with Citizen Review Board? Being placed on hold, but I understand the nature of crime that really goes on in Atlanta. I don't come down here and complain about 911. Hey, man, it goes on. Yes, there probably need to be some additional training when you telling them there's a true emergency, and they still trying to get you to this, a life or death situation, and the operator is still trying to get some information. That don't matter when it's a life or death situation. So everything has to be improved. Do every councilmember get it right? No. Do every mayor get it right? No. But we try our best, and we try to hire the best and the brightest. I seen this legislation today, Councilman Boone, you and Councilman Lewis, ask someone to go to DC and New York so they can find the best practices. Well, how about sometimes in Atlanta, we overlook our talent. I don't think we understand that in every Atlanta public school, there's a valedictorian every year and a salutatory in your top 5% and 10%, as you know as a former board. The talent is in Atlanta. I don't know why sometimes we go outside of Atlanta when we have homegrown talent here. We've seen recently that when we go up north and further down south and we hire people, that causes us embarrassment and lawsuits and money because we continuously go outside of Atlanta. If we truly stand on this is a city that too busy to hate, then why do we continuously go outside of this city? I don't understand it. But this particular board to get back, the Atlanta Citizen Review Board, Ms. Norwood, is very imperative that we have people that is compassion, have empathy. I mean, that's a must. That's the basic human thing that you ask for when you serving on a board. You can't serve two masters. The only master is, what God have said, the greatest of all these commandments is love. If you can't operate in love and empathy, you shouldn't be on none of these boards because you're not beholden to no one who referred you to the board. You're beholden to the citizens, but God first and the citizens of Atlanta. Thank you.
Ms. Susan Douglas?
Greetings. Good afternoon. My name is Susan Douglas. A couple of years ago, my family purchased a building in Buckhead. The intent of the building was to open a restaurant, a restaurant in the community of Morning Hills. Our plans were approved. We were told we can move forward by zoning, and then our plans were revoked because of the lack of parking in the community. I have, I would say, just a round number, 20 years of restaurant experience. I'm the president of the Atlanta Restaurant Association. We've been through this before. 20 years, we're still talking about parking in Atlanta. Knowing that everything has changed as far as transportation goes, there's the Ubers and the Lifts. As we change, ordinances should change as well. We're now sitting on this property, paying approximately $14,000 a month until we're approved to begin building our restaurant. And the only thing that's holding us back, it's not money. Time has been exhausting, you know, two years of not being able to build and still making payments on a property that we own. But the fact that the ordinance is still state, something that's so old. As we pull, as Darwin had mentioned, you know, folks from other cities and states, maybe Miami or New York, they've made changes in their communities, and we should too. And I would just like to put the words out here to say, let's change this ordinance. Help us have a community like the ones we like to visit, whether we're walking from, you know, 10 sidewalks, squares down to have coffee after dinner, or catching an Uber in a designated Uber location. That's safety. We're talking about safety. We're also talking about community here. So I appreciate you listening. I appreciate your consideration, and I'd also like to know, this is my second time here, but how do we follow up on these issues? Are we notified if these things are considered? And what else, what other information can I provide with you, to you, to help bring light to the situation? Thank you.
Thank you. We have been joined by the Honorable Byron DeAmos and the Honorable Antonio Lewis. At this time, before we hear from presentations, we have a great, great group of Atlanta Police Department Command Staff here. Will Chief Tyus come up and will each member come up of the Command Staff and introduce yourself? We are so very excited and so very happy to have you as guests today. Will you all individually come to the mic and tell us your name and what you do? Some of you all, we are so very proud of the new promotions. Chief Tyus, thank you.
Again, thank you, ma'am, and we appreciate the invite to come down. As always, it's a pleasure to see you all and be in your presence. I think most of you all know I am Assistant Chief Carvin Tyus. I am responsible for the day-to-day operation of the Atlanta Police Department. With me is the executive branch of the Atlanta Police Department, and these are the commanders of the Atlanta Police Department, and I'll allow each one of them to come up and introduce themselves.
Good afternoon. I am Jessica Bruce, Deputy Chief over our Professional Development Division, which houses the Training Academy, our Policy and Standards, and our accreditation for the department.
Good afternoon. I'm Major Kelly Collier, the Commander of the Airport Section, soon to be Deputy Chief of the Community Services Division.
Congratulations. We do remember when you did a fine job in Zone 1. Congratulations.
Good afternoon. I am Prinsina Span, Deputy Chief over Criminal Investigations Division. Good to see you all today.
Good afternoon. I'm Felicia Claxton. I'm the Major of the Office of Professional Standards.
Good afternoon. Desiree Arnold, Executive Director for Atlanta E911.
Good afternoon. I'm Shata Spikes, Executive Director of Public Affairs.
Good afternoon. Deputy Chief Charles Hampton Jr. oversee our Special Events Division.
Good afternoon. Marshall Freeman, Chief Administrative Officer. I have the pleasure of overseeing the administration and operations of the department.
Good afternoon. I'm the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer.
Thank you, thank you. Let's give them a hand. He's great, great. Thank you. Thank y'all so much. We will release you all now. Thank you all for being here today. Chief Tyus, crime statistics, please.
I guess I should have just stayed up here, ma'am. Again, thank you all for having us as always, and as you see, I have a very great team of executives, commanders, and the Atlanta Police Department, and those are the people that really drive our crime. I know, you know, myself and Chief Sheerbaum and Deputy Chief Smith will come up and give you the stats, but realistically, those are the people that really run the engine of the Atlanta Police Department because they're responsible for the 1,700-plus men and women that run the Atlanta Police Department. And so one of the reasons we are down in crime this year, as you will see, going into this week, we continue to trend downwardly. We are seeing some challenges in our aggravated assault, but that was because, as always, now we're counting dwellings versus incidents, but we did make a significant arrest last week on an 18-year-old individual that was responsible for some of those shootings. So now, in this seven-day period, you will see that we are back in the negative as it relates to those aggravated assaults. Another challenge we're seeing is really with the theft from autos, but we continue to see that really with the parking garages and the parking decks. And so with that, we've pushed out to our commanders, make sure that they are challenging the owners of these people, the ones that are getting revenue from these parking decks, to ensure that they are providing adequate lighting and that they are providing some type of security and so that they have skin in the game. We did see some small uptick in our burglaries, but a lot of those were renovations and vacant dwellings as Atlanta continues to grow and as we continue to renovate houses and build more houses. We do have a challenge with people breaking into those, stealing appliances and things overnight, so that is a conversation we continue to have with people that are building here to ensure that they are, making sure that they are securing those dwellings and not leaving anything in there. As you can see, overall, we are still down in crime, property crimes and crimes against person. So as we start to segue into the warmer weather, we're just going to have to dig deeper and just look at those areas where we do find challenges. But every single week, just know that the men and women are out there on the front line, and they are responding to those calls. If there's any questions, I'll take them.
Do we have any questions from the board? The Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, followed by the Honorable Byron DeAmos.
Thank you, Chairman Boone. Thank you, Assistant Chief. Glad to see, I mean, I'm glad to see all the crime that's down, but one particular that has come up before and in the chief's quarterly report is motor vehicle thefts from the airport. So glad to see that coming down and I hope to continue to see this. We got to take this with a grain of salt. It's six weeks into the year, but can you speak to anything that has been done in the airport in that regard to kind of strengthen that security system at the parking deck there?
Absolutely, sir. Major Collier, who just left, soon to be Deputy Chief Collier, was heading up that division, and what he did was really just started pushing officers out into those parking decks also. So as the officers were patrolling, he was pushing them out into parking deck. But we have been in conversations with the parking deck owners also to enhance security out there, i.e. lighting, and also ensuring that cars aren't allowed to piggyback in and out of the deck. So they are making enhancements, but really, a lot of it's just been boots on the ground, making sure that we have the proper resources in those deck areas.
Thank you, and great job.
Thanks, sir.
Good afternoon, Chief. Not so much of a question, but a concern that I have, and it's rare that we have almost everybody in the room that can help answer the question. So I know I won't get an answer today. My concern is how many cycles. What I mean by that is when your officers are giving reports in the NPU, they talk about this person arrested 15 times, 16 times. We got APD, we got municipal court, we got solicitor. I know we probably need to talk to county and state. Simply, how do we put people in jail and keep them there that belong, that's supposed to be there? For a person to be arrested for the same crime 20 times, and I know you probably got higher cycles than that, we need to work collectively to figure out how to give our community a breath, just a time off. Of your officers arresting someone, two days later, they back on the street doing the same thing. So I know the powers that be in this room can get together and begin to answer that question, but I'm more than happy, whatever we have to do ordinance-wise, talk to our colleagues up the ladders towards county and state, let me know, and I leave that charge. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The Honorable Antonio Lewis?
Similar to some of the questions my colleagues asked, thank you for your report. The first question was around the car break-ins and the car theft. Have we, have you all switched, have you started using more of the technology that's available to you and means of robotic dogs or robotic items similar to other cities and what we're using on Cleveland Avenue to reduce car break-ins by over 300% now?
Okay, so currently, we use all technology available. That's LPR, license plate readers. We look at our citizens' cameras. We look at any cameras or any technology in any area, so we are open to any suggestions. But yes, sir, we are using all technology that we have currently on hand, sir.
And I know you talked about putting more boots on the ground in parking decks, and there are other things our police officers can be doing. One of the things that we've done on Cleveland Avenue and 4045 apartments is we actually hired, we actually bought robotic dogs, and we've been able to reduce crime to car break-ins to zero. We are now about at almost 90 days since we had a car break-in or a car theft, and it's also went over to the golf course across the street, Brownsdale Golf Course, where they don't have the car break-ins and thefts as well. And so I know we've been talking about this for about three years here, and so a private owner for less than $10,000 was able to buy two, purchase two dogs, and for 60 days, we had zero car break-ins, and we didn't even have the dogs yet. It was just a rumor. And so similar to, we keep talking about crime reduced, I know District 12 and Zone 3 had the highest reduction, and it was mainly about us bringing more resources and giving people jobs. And we talk about recidivism, and we have everybody in the room right now, so my question is if we can, because we can't lock our way up out of this, and I don't want us to. I think right now, we've proved it in District 12 over the past three years, because when I was elected, if everybody was in the room, when I was elected, we did the YSL, they did the YSL Rico charge, and DA Fonny Willis called Zone 3, District 12 mainly from Cleveland Avenue to Pittsburgh community, the most dangerous stretch in Fulton County. They said it multiple times during the trial. And so we've been able to reduce it so much, so last year was 22% drop. No other district, no other zone had over an 8% drop. And so we, the only thing we did different is bring resources, get people jobs. We have another job for this month. So my question to you with everybody in the room, are we doing anything? Can we do something different? And is the robots, are we looking at, before we start our budget season that's coming up, are we looking at buying the robotic dogs? Because we proved it.
Sir, everything's still open right now. Again, we are open to any new technology, and that's certainly something that we can look at as a police department.
And is there a way to follow that up? I think that what we've proven is we don't, if there's a way to not try to do what we did before and lock our way up out of this, if there's a way to not use our police officers' time like security guards in parking lots, when there's other things that they could be out here fighting, I think that we've proved on Cleveland Avenue by purchasing the dogs, I would like to get a plan or something from you all that could talk about that being a part of the budget for next year because we can fix it. I think that we've, we're almost 90 days right now. We don't have car break-ins, and we're talking about the airport where people are going through stuff at the airport. I don't want to see police officers out there. I would prefer seeing robotic dogs out there that are watching people instead of having our police officers wasting their time doing that or running through a parking lot with a gun out trying to chase down a young person for breaking in a car. So I'll leave there, but I just want to make sure I put it out there because we've done something different in my area, and we've, the numbers are there, 22% with nothing else over it. So the numbers are there, and I would like for us to start working on these different things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis.
The Honorable Ishay Collins?
Thank you. I just have a quick question in terms of understanding, I guess, the strategy around addressing the recidivism and what partnerships look like, you know, with Fulton County or other entities. I know that Fulton County really had like a heavy docket that they've really been working through on some of these, you know, a lot of these cases. So just for, you know, giving us on this end, just a clearer picture of what that looks like to ensure that the same offenders are not able to, you know, yeah, just tell us more.
Yes, sir. So we have a dedicated unit called a repeat offender unit that solely looks at recidivism, and they work hand-in-hand with our municipal courts and our state court to ensure that these people that are reoffending, that they are brought to the forefront and that the prosecutors and the judges are aware of it. And so that is kind of how we partner with them. We have, as I said, a dedicated unit. They talk frequently with the courts, and they're letting them know any repeat offenders that we have that are worthy of special attention.
How does that information, how is that information or the engagement with the community looks like? Because I know there's a lot of conversations about, just, I mean, just repeated actions in communities where, you know, members are just wanting to understand more of what's happening. So how are we doing a better job of just bridging that information and giving it, you know, bringing it back to our communities?
Yes, ma'am. Most of that's done through our NPU meetings. Our majors in the zones, that is one of the things that they should be highlighting in every NPU meetings, telling the citizens when they do have a repeat offender, when they do have an individual that's a thorn in that community, to ensure that they are going to court also so that their voices are being heard, so that when that individual case is coming up, that you don't just see the officer and the solicitor standing there in the courtroom, but you see the people that were victim of that crimes, their friends, and also other people that live on that street that are in the courts with them. So again, the majors and the commanders should be pushing that out at all our neighborhood planning units, ma'am.
I have one last question, Chair. Chairman Boone. So there used to be, and correct me if I'm wrong, there used to be a program where there were either district attorney offices or, you know, district attorneys or solicitors that would actually join us at the NPU meetings and provide updates on some of those, you know, some of those cases that were, you know, repeat offender, repeated offenders or serious, you know, serious felonies. Is that, does that program still exist? I haven't, you know, I just wanted, because I haven't seen some of those same individuals or even, you know, those representatives at our NPU meetings. Is that program still?
I'm not sure if the program still exists, but we certainly invite them out to the NPU meetings, so maybe that's a question best for the city solicitors, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that I asked. It was a great program. My mayor was just very dedicated, so there was that one person from the solicitor's office and the DA's office that would give consistent report out for some of those major cases that communities were following.
Yes, I'm definitely aware of what you're speaking of. I remember it when I was a zone commander, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns from the body? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you all.
Wonderful job. Thank you. At this time, we would like to recognize our labor union leaders. If you would stand, with Sandra Williams and her team, President of the Atlanta Sandra Williams and her team, President of the Atlanta North Georgia Labor Council. Whenever we see you all, we want to thank you for your hard work and dedication. Thank you so much. At this time, the Atlanta Municipal Court Quarterly Update led by Chief Judge Christopher Ward.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Boone, honorable members of the Atlanta City Council. It's a pleasure to be here with you all today. And in this presentation of the first quarterly report for the Municipal Court of Atlanta, I would like to assure you, and I say with pride, that we continue to be the largest court of any type in the Southeast region, consistently ranking as one of the most efficient in the nation. The court, its judges, and approximately 153 employees continue to maintain the status of best in class by concentrating on all operations of the court. At this time, the Court Administrator Chief Clerk, Mr. DeAndre Moore, will present the first quarterly report for the court. I will remain for questions. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of this committee. It is a pleasure for us to be here today. And I have a presentation full of statistics to bore you, but to inform you that the health of the court is strong. So we will go ahead and get started. This is just a breakdown of the different divisions within the court, case types that we hear, DUI, Community Court, General Traffic, In-Custody First Appearance, Housing Code, as well as Criminal and Aggravated Traffic. In each of these slides, I'm going to give you the final numbers for 2024, as well as the numbers for January of this year. So last year, we ended the year with approximately 335,264 individuals entering our building. Average monthly entry, about 27,939. This year, we started out in January at 25,966. And of course, that is a decrease from last year, but we also had two snow days this year that we didn't have this past December. Weapons and contraband that have been confiscated. One highlight that we would like to announce is that we were able to secure new security systems in the two entrances of the courthouse. So we have been able to be very diligent in confiscating any weapons or contraband that has been attempted to be brought into the building. We ended the year at 653, and that is a breakdown of different types, razors, box cutters, knives, handguns, gas and pepper spray. This year, we are only at 87 so far. Total cases filed, I'll start with 2024. We ended the year at 119,916 cases filed in 2024. That is a 10,000 case increase from 2023, which saw 109,000 cases. So far this year, we've started out with 9,861, which should put us on course to beat 2024's final numbers. Disposed. Last year, we ended the year disposing of 106,379 cases. And so far this year, we've done 7,500. This is, next few slides are a breakdown by the different case types. Traffic, we ended the year with 91,000 filed, 85,000 disposed for a 93% clearance rate. This year, we started out with 8,000 filed, 6,000 roughly disposed, clearance rate of 76%. And also, the numbers are on par for the same, they're pretty much equal for traffic cases from last year, as far as filed and disposal. Criminal cases. Last year, we ended with 11,000, roughly 12,000 cases filed, 75 disposed, clearance rate of 64%. We've started this year off with 1,174 filed, 663 disposed, 56% clearance rate. I'll go back to last January, we had 923 cases filed. So we did increase the cases that were filed. Clearance rate is lower on these. These cases typically take longer resets and because of the complex nature of these cases. So these aren't cases that'll come in and go out just as quickly as a routine traffic case. Housing cases. We ended the year at 72,29, disposed 66,96, 93% clearance rate. This year, we've had 746 filed, 688 disposed for a 92% clearance rate. This is another area where our cases filed has dramatically increased. Last year, we started with 367 cases filed last January. And so this year, we're at 746. FTA. As we know, roughly 30% of those who are ordered to appear in court will not show, which of course brings about FTAs. Last year, we had 17,555 filed, 15,000 disposed for a clearance rate of 86%. This year so far, we have had 2,00642 filed, disposed of 600 for a 23% clearance rate. All right. So that is the end of the statistical portion. We did want to again highlight some of the accomplishments that we have had at Municipal Court throughout the end of last year, as well as the top of this year. And as already stated, we got the funding and we have increased and upgraded our security system so that the employees, the judges, and the general public are all safe when they come into our building. We have invested in employee enrichment, employee morale and community engagement. Employee enrichment, we have, at the end of last year, we had an active shooter training. We are planning a CPR training later in this, in the month of March. Community engagement, we participated in the reentry fair last year, along with the mayor and the Solicitor General of Fulton County. And employee morale, holiday events. We've gotten together as a team throughout the holiday season and fellowship together. These are just a picture of some of our interns who are with us from Clark Atlanta, Spelman, and Georgia State University. Last November, we were proud to host our first annual Day of Giving, where we solicited donations from different companies and different organizations throughout the community. We had sponsors like Target, Costco, Walmart, Chick-fil-A, as well as different churches, funeral homes, and other entities. Dentist offices donated hundreds of toothbrushes and toothpastes for us to give out to those who are unhoused. And we were able to pass out hundreds of backpacks. And that was a highlight for the court. And it was the first, and what we say, first annual. So we will be doing it again this year. Lastly, before I take my seat, we are celebrating on next Monday, the retirement of the Honorable Calvin Graves. Judge Graves has been on the bench for over 30 years, and he has devoted his life to public service as a veteran, as a lawyer, a judge, a family man. And we are proud of the accomplishments of Judge Graves. His resume is extensive, and his accolades are many. And we look forward to celebrating all of that in this very chamber on next week. And with that, I will take any questions that you all may have from me or the Chief Judge.
Do we have any questions from the body? The Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis?
Thank you, Chairman Boone. Just a few questions. Thank you for the presentation. This is maybe for you or the Chief Judge. Chief Judge, you're, I guess, still relatively new, I would say, in the role of Chief Judge. So I would ask how the court is currently tackling FTAs. Did you change any practices and try to get those FTAs to come in, to get FTAs down? What is the current status on that?
Well, with regard to FTAs, when I was Chief Judge, first time, 2015, Yolanda Adrian was on the council, and it was, FTAs were referred to as backlog cases. I explained then, and I'll explain now, we cannot call everyone every day, 2,000 cases, 119 last year, and say, come to court. But what we can provide is the infrastructure whereby individuals can come into court and timely see a judge, arrest, address the arrest warrant, fail to appear, penalty is two days in custody, 200 penalty, and the underlying offense. Scientifically, we have about 30, 30% of people that fail to come to court, each and every docket. That includes the FTA docket as well. So we have individuals that will come to the courthouse, get on the docket, and fail to appear on the fail-toappear calendar, complicating matters for themselves. But the approach has not changed with regard to how the court addresses fail-toappears. It began in 2015 with the first fail-toappear walk-in court. And that walk-in court has turned into a division. We have the infrastructure to handle these cases. We just have to have folk come into court. Nothing has changed with regard to our ability to address those cases. I know that Judge Portis, a former Chief Judge Portis, is currently in that division. And he's handling up to about 100 cases per day. So we are addressing the FTAs. We haven't changed anything. We have the infrastructure. We're there. We're ready to address the cases. So I hope I've handled or addressed your question appropriately. And addressing your concern, I will state that as Chief Judge, I have taken the authority to increase our daily arraignment calendars from 110 to 130. So just to give you an explanation, arraignment is where the first in any court in this state and this nation. You go to court, charges are read aloud, you have an opportunity to tender a plea of guilty, no contest, or move along to continuum of having your case resolved. Arraignment cases are set separate and distinct from trials, motions, hearings, or status cases. So every courtroom in the Municipal Court of Atlanta will have now mid-March, not 110 cases for arraignment, 130, plus the additional status cases and the hearings that would go on, and that would include trials. So we're increasing our bandwidth, if you will, so that we can continue to provide effective and efficient adjudication of cases for those that we serve. We are best in class. And we prove it each and every day with the fine work that we provide those that are charged with offenses, defendants, victims, business interests, and in our communities within the city of Atlanta. We just have to have folk come to court.
Right. Understand that. Thank you for that. Just a question. I know, I think two or three budget cycles ago, we approved a new, a much-needed new camera system for the courts. Was that ever implemented, installed? So the courtroom cameras?
We would have to get with you, or we'd have to take your question, and we could give you an answer in that regard. But we are looking at upgrades, along with that camera recording system, but also the database in which we handle our cases. So as to a couple years ago, and what happened with those funds, or if they were actually expended, we can get back to you and provide you information in that regard. I apologize. I can't answer that for you right now.
Oh, yeah. Can you just follow up with information on that? Final question, as far as your, the officers that staff the court, I assume, and may, may be making a wrong assumption, or most if not all those officers retired APD that the court hires? Or I guess, who do those officers, whether they're up front at the security system or the bailiffs in the individual courtrooms? How do those, who do those officers answer to? Who hires them? Who's over them?
According to our organizational chart, the Director of Security, Director Jones, reports to the Court Administrator Chief Clerk, Mr. Moore, all hires for retired APD officers are hired by the court through Mr. Moore and/or Director Jones.
So they would just answer directly to the courts?
Yes.
Well, I ask that question because I've gotten some complaints recently about, I guess you would say, some rudeness and unkindness amongst those that staff the court, the officers that staff the court.
Yes, sir.
And they, of course, wear Atlanta Police Department badges.
That is correct.
And insignia. And I would not want people to experience that level of rudeness and unkindness and contribute that to APD. You know, they're obviously retired APD employees, but they now work for the court. So I think there may need to be have some, may need to be some conversations had with those officers. And, you know, I know going into a courtroom, you know, probably like herding cats to get people to go sit and behave. And but, I mean, I've heard complaints both from defendants and even attorneys that have been in certain courtrooms. May not be every person in every courtroom, or every officer in every courtroom, but hope to not hear any more of those complaints.
Well, Councilman Hillis, I really appreciate the question. And if you could give us the specifics at the time that they're made, I'm certain we'll be responsive to it. But, you know, yourself, Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Amos, you've come over to the court. You see a host of folk that we have in the courthouse each and every day, some are respectful, some are rude, and some are downright nasty, not only to each other in the courtroom, but the judges and the bailiffs. But I can assure you that I'm proud of the work that our security staff does on behalf of the court each and every day. And we will address any issues that come to your attention or anyone on City Council with regard to how we're performing our duties as a whole at the court.
Thank you, Chief Judge.
Just let us know.
The Honorable Antonio Lewis?
Chief Judge Ward, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your report today. Chief, Chief Clerk Moore, thank you for your report. Thank you for your service to the city last November as well. That was the first time you all have done amazing, amazing project. I truly appreciate. And that was the addition of you to the, so thank you so much. I was able to see the aftermath as I got there a little late because it ran out so fast. So we have to find a way to actually increase it on our end and help more because the need is greater than what we even thought. So thank you for providing on that need. Thank you again for your report today. And as you mentioned, I quite frequently come by and I'm able to see how it, how the court actually runs. And then I actually get to talk to my wife, who's a prosecutor with the solicitor's office. So when I hear 100 cases that are, that Chief Portis is doing, I'm thinking about the budget, and I'm thinking about sustainability. And can he do that? 100 cases per day, you said, that he's doing?
Well, each of our judges.
Is doing at least 100 cases per day?
At least 100 cases per day.
And I know how difficult that could be on, I'm just thinking about your budget. And 100, what's the, what caseload is a approximate caseload that would be good for you per day? What, in ideal world, pie in the sky? Because we're going to go to work, and we understand we're supposed to do our job. But 100 cases, we know what burnout looks like. We know you're stretching yourself. And I heard you just say over 130. I heard you say it. And I truly understand because my wife's a prosecutor.
Okay.
Solicitor.
Well, I'll say, to answer your question, what would be a good number? Well, I wake up every day to serve. So I could take 130. There have been times I've taken 200 cases a day. And what I look at is the adjudication of cases effectively and efficiently, because the main determining factor is whether or not an individual goes out in our communities and commits a crime again, is the timing and the situation of matters handled by the court. So I've handled 50 cases a day, 100. I can handle 200 a day. I wake up to serve along with all the other judges in our staff and personnel at the court. We are a highly efficient court, the largest of any type in the Southeast region. And we're doing a yeoman's job of a class that's representative, best in class. No one can do it better. We're fine at 110, we're fine at 130. As long as I can serve, to answer your question, in many cases that I give myself or the other judges, it's enough for me.
Well, let me ask him more.
Sure.
Because we all, we look at budgets. I'm thinking about the budget right now, and I'm looking at 100 cases. And I know you could do it. You could do 200, you could do 300 if we ask you to, because you love Atlanta and you love the work that you do. But 50 is what I heard you say as well. And it sounds like, my goal is to make sure we truly appreciate the effectiveness and efficiency of it. Well, pie in the sky. What would we want our goal, our judges to be able to do manage wise, if we were able to catch up, or if we need to add more judges? Because I know sometimes we actually do contract-out judges. And so I want to make sure our prosecutors, we only have a certain amount of money for our solicitors with the city of Atlanta. So that means they have 100 cases a day too. And so I'm thinking about that.
Well, at this point, ideally, 110 to 130.
Okay.
We received, as Chief Judge, the buy-in from all of the judges, the majority of judges on the bench, moving from 110 to 130. What we're seeing is an influx- What we're seeing is an influx of cases coming in. We're down a judge at this time, and, you know, handling fifty cases, when you know and you're going to get thousands more, is not realistic. One ten to one thirty is what we can manage and continue to have the efficient, effective adjudication of cases, keeping in mind that we're judged by our clearance rate, which is one of the finest in the country. So at this point, where we are with the numbers and with the consultation of the Chief Clerk, Court Administrator, this, at this point, one ten to one thirty is tolerable, it's optimal for the work we do, and, you know, we're in court each and every day. So in that regard, you look at being human.
I know, that's what I'm thinking about.
And when you come to the courthouse, you've seen the judges, the prosecutors, the public defenders, the bailiffs have to reset with each personality that's presented before the court, it's not an easy task. And, you know, with regard to our security, they don't just sit and watch the machine, the objects go through the machine, but that's, those are about four officers. We got a cadre of officers that are in the courtroom, walking the halls, making certain that folk are safe with the increased and frequency number of cases that we have. So we're doing the best we can with what we're dealing with.
Doing an amazing job.
And I can tell you, no one can do it better.
And I wish you didn't have to do yeoman's work, that's what I'm getting to. The goal is, is we get close to budget season and see the type of work that you're doing, I appreciate you for that. The next thing I wanted to talk about was school speeding tickets. Is there, I know we've been able to, been all over the news, I know Metropolitan Parkway has got all of us, right? Got me a couple of times, but I know there's been a pause in it. Has we have, have, is there still a increase in speeding tickets coming to the court? And have we, I know we talked about during, helping some folks who had issues at first because they were getting speeding tickets at times in which it was not school hours, or at times when school was not open. So are we helping people in that manner?
Right. I haven't seen a major influx, but I will say, in relation to the errors and the issues from the vendor, and as you say, Metropolitan is a real hotspot, and I too got one on Metropolitan. We have seen a lot of instances in where, in which the company has had to refund a lot of drivers, because the beacons have been flashing at wrong times, you know, as opposed to the actual school zone times. We've also seen situations where they were, the beacons were going on days such as the snow days, and people were given citations for that, so the company has had, Vera Mobility has had to come back and dismiss those cases, and if the drivers had paid before they got that dismissal, they were given refunds from Vera.
I appreciate you on that. One last comment, FTA walk-in court, I wish it wasn't as many cases. Can we bring back amnesty days? And I'm thinking about the people that are just, they nervous, and so amnesty days.
So you must, must be in my head.
No, we, we, I think we're thinking about helping people, so if we think, if you're thinking like I'm thinking, we on the same page.
Right, we are meeting internally regarding the amnesty program sometime in the spring. We're gathering numbers, seeing all these FTAs that are outstanding, and yes, we are going to go forward with that. We have met, the Chief Judge and I have met with the mayor and informed him of such, of our intention to go through with it, and we will be hitting airwaves and letting folks know, come in, you know, pay a reduced fine, clear your name.
Thank you again, thank you to the Honorable Calvin S. Graves again, thank you for your service, thank you, thank you, Mr. Moore, thank you, Chief George Ward, continue to serve Atlanta, Atlanta appreciates you.
Thank you so much.
The Honorable Ishay Collins?
Great, thank you. Now, this is a great presentation, thank you all so much. Just, a lot of my questions have been answered, the Amnesty Day piece I was going to ask as well, just not for those that may have FTAs and are scared, but for people that really didn't know, and I was, I was one of those years ago that didn't realize it, and so that it was, it was extremely beneficial. I'm just going back to, let's see, so in terms of the clearance rates, I know they're, you know, looking at, and I'll just use the traffic case, traffic cases slide, where I know it was a total filed of approximately ninety-one thousand, but a total dispose of eighty-five thousand, and so are those remaining cases, those roll over into, okay, FY twenty twenty-five? And I think it's important just to pull that out, so it doesn't look, you know, so it doesn't appear that you all have cited over eight thousand people in the last two months of twenty twenty-five, but just making it clear that it's about six thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven cases that have rolled over?
Well, no, no, so that number will roll, what is that, a seven thousand, six thousand case increase, excuse me, balance, that'll roll over into the pot of cases that are open, which if you go back to, say, the amnesty cases?
Okay.
It won't affect what was filed, so we did have eight thousand new traffic tickets issued in the month of January.
And so where's the, so the open cases, where, where does that data lay then?
It's not in here, we can pull it for you.
Okay.
And get that to you.
All right, so, okay, that's, so technically, for, right, currently, right now, there are about fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty, fourteen thousand, six hundred open cases. Okay, great, got it. And then for, I was just curious, I was shocked, on the slide where the weapons and contraband, the first one that is confiscated, and for twenty twenty-five, you see this increase of, what is, what's deemed miscellaneous? Does it seem like that's the largest category?
Just the hodgepodge, just in the.
Oh, okay, all right. And I think, I think it just, you know, just kind of for clarity, just so that it doesn't send the impression that it's more handguns coming in?
Okay.
Or, you know, just other data, I mean, excuse me, other things coming in, I was just curious about the miscellaneous category. And then just for my edification, you guys, and I know I'm an attorney, for housing, what, what cases, what, besides code enforcement cases, what other cases are handled in, that you guys considered housing cases?
I would say just housing code violations.
Okay.
You know, code enforcement, alcohol licensing, false alarms.
Got it, got it.
You know, your basic code violations, housing code, business violations and so forth. Did I answer that for you?
Yeah, no, you did, because a lot of, I know a lot of times I get questions in terms of, you know, with housing issues, thinking they municipal, and I'm like, no, you go, you know, if it's an eviction or something, that makes you go to magistrate, you know, magistrate court. So I just wanted to just lift that, and I think that's pretty much all the questions that I had, a lot of my questions were answered as well, and thank you all so much. Really, I'm really proud of Judge Graves, he's getting ready to retire, been in front of him a few times, I'm really excited for that. And then I'm letting us, I think one other data point would be good, not for this presentation, but moving forward, is also understanding, just a breakdown of the cases, like of this docket, how many cases are being dismissed, which case, you know, fines, fine range amounts, jail time, I think that helps us understand what's happening at the city level, particularly when we're having conversations on the, you know, detention center, things of that nature. So just understanding what the found disposition of some of these cases could be, also just helping us understand the data, but this is great work, thank you, appreciate it. Oh, Madam Chair, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, the Honorable Antonio Lewis?
Just one more thing to Judge Graves, the city is better for you because of you, Judge Graves, and I truly appreciate you and your service to the young people of the city. The cases that I know he was over had a lot to do with giving young people what we call it, a second chance, but it was a specific term for it, but he was amazing at it, I met too many young people he's helped, so thank you so much, Judge Graves, for your service.
And I'd like to add, if I may, I'll be out of town on a prior commitment next Monday, when the retirement celebration will be held graciously in the City Council chambers. I'd just like to state, on behalf of the Court as Chief Judge, that we greatly appreciate the work of Judge Graves. He has not only contributed to the court, but the legal community and the great city of Atlanta, and he will be retiring and enjoying that for a brief amount of time. He will be serving as a senior judge, and we look forward to continuing to work with him, but we greatly appreciate his work and all that he's done for our great city.
Thank you, Judge, I think this concludes our presentation for today, thank you.
Thank you all, have a good day.
Without any objection, we are going to take our agenda items first, we will move into our consent agenda. Mr. Overton, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this takes us to our communications, communications, excuse me, item number one, twenty-five C zero zero two zero, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Mr. Elder Dancy as Chief of Corrections for the city of Atlanta.
Please come forward. Congratulations, Elder, you all have run a first-rated facility, you all have run a clean and safe facility, and this is a day many of us have been waiting on, so congratulations, and we'd like to just give him a hand.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and other distinguished members, thank you for this consideration, and I want to thank the mayor for this opportunity. As I stand here and reflect, I realize I've spent more than half of my life working for the city of Atlanta. I spent thirty years with the Atlanta Police Department, where I retired as a deputy chief in charge of the Community Services Division, and then the last four years as the interim chief for the Department of Corrections. And I could say that, as I stand here, I'm truly honored, blessed, and humbled to have this opportunity to continue to lead a great department with a group of dynamic employees who are committed to serving this city, and committed to the care and custody and protection of those who come to us at, sometimes at their lowest point. And we look forward to continuing to provide the services and moving the mayor's agenda forward, especially his four pillows, and working with this council as we serve our most vulnerable citizens. It is our commitment to continue to make our citizens, the mayor's administration, and this council proud. And finally, I'll say, as a, as a resident of this city, thank you all for everything that you do each and every day for our community. And also, I want to thank my staff, a lot of them showed up, I didn't know they would be here today.
If they would stand, please stand.
Thank you.
Wonderful, wonderful, city of Atlanta employees, wonderful, thank you all so much. Thank you all.
Thanks again for this opportunity, thank you.
And Chief, thank you all for what you all do for the shelters and those wonderful, wonderful hot meals that many of our citizens don't get until they go into the shelters. So for you all having a big heart, thank you again.
Thank you.
I move approval. Seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, please open the vote.
Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays, the item is accepted.
Congratulations, you all may be released, thank you. Next item, Mr. Overton?
We'll next move on to the claims.
Can we have a motion to approve the favorable claims?
So moved.
Moved by the Honorable Ishay Collins, seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, please open the vote.
Can all council members please vote? Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays, the favorable claims are approved.
May we have a motion to adverse the unfavorable claims? Moved by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis.
Second.
Seconded by the Honorable Ishay Collins, please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays, the unfavorable claims have been reversed. Madam Chair, that brings us to the ordinances for second reading, starting with item number one, twenty-five oh one zero seven six, an ordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to accept on behalf of the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department a donation from the Atlanta Fire Rescue Foundation of two twenty-twenty-three Rivian R one T valued at approximately seventy-six thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars and zero cents, each to be accepted as of January sixteenth, twenty twenty, two thousand twenty-five for emergency response uses within the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department and for other purposes.
Move approval, seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, please open the vote.
Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays, the item is favorable. And this brings us to item number two, twenty-five oh one one zero zero, an ordinance by Council Member Michael Julian Bond to correct ordinance number twenty-four oh one five three zero, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, and approve pursuant to the city charter, section two dash four oh three, on October thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, for the purpose of changing the delivery method of charges and summons slash civil notice under the housing and landing code of nineteen eighty-seven, and for other purposes.
Move approval, seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, five yays, zero nays, the item is favorable. This brings us to our resolutions, if there are no objections, when we take items three and four as a block?
Please proceed.
Item number three, twenty-five R three one nine five, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the reemployment of city of Atlanta retiree Senior Police Officer Richard Butler, and the Atlanta Police Department for annual compensation not to exceed sixty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars and zero cents, pursuant to section three dash five oh five B of the city charter, of the charter of the city of Atlanta and for other purposes. And item number four, twenty-five R three one nine six, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the reemployment of city of Atlanta retiree Senior Police Officer William Jackson Junior, and the Atlanta Police Department for annual compensation not to exceed seventy-two thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars and zero and twenty cents, pursuant to section three dash five oh five B of the charter of the city of Atlanta and for other purposes.
Do we have a motion? Moved by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Byron Amos, please open the vote.
Can all council members please vote? Vote is closed, five yays, zero nays, the items are favorable. Madam Chair, this concludes our legislative agenda for today.
Thank you, Mr. Overton. At this time, we would like to get a report from Mr. Reed, Atlanta Citizens Review Board We are also joined by Chief Strategy Officer, Mr. Peter Aiman, will you please stand? Thank you for being here as well.
Thank you, Chair Boone, and committee members. My name is Lee Reed, Executive Director of the Atlanta Citizen Review Board. With me today is my executive team, Deputy Director Mahola Smith, who is over Community Engagement, Mediation, and Administration, and Deputy Director Sheena Robertson, who is over Investigations. I appreciate the opportunity to set the record straight regarding the AJC articles. Today's presentation will clearly show that the allegations in the AJC article are baseless and without merit, when it insinuated that the agency was derelict in its duties. I know there are a lot of questions related to what you read in the article. I, more than anyone, was disappointed about the articles and the attack on my integrity and the integrity of the ACRB. Over the years, my small office and board members have worked hard to build this agency into a national model of civilian oversight. On slide two, you'll see the agenda for today, the mission and purpose of the ACRB, intent of the charter, Appendix Nine, Section twelve C, C two, Resolution twenty-five R thirty-eight eight, ACRB officer-involved shooting, custody death process. ACRB officer-involved shooting, custody death process, agency data and activities, and the path going forward. The ACRB is an independent investigative agency of the City of Atlanta, authorized to receive, investigate, mediate, and adjudicate citizen complaints against Atlanta police and corrections officers. The agency also conducts community engagement and education. One of its main goals is to increase trust between the citizens and the city's officer accountability mechanisms and hope of reducing city liability and community protests related to officer misconduct. I can't see that screen, so I'm gonna have to... So it brings us here today. The purpose of today is to address concerns of the council as outlined in Resolution R twenty-five R thirty-eighty-eight. My hope is that, after you have heard the facts, you will conclude that the article was misleading and devoid of facts as they related to the ACRB operation. So on the screen right now, you'll see the good start in place for our discussion. This is the intent behind the twenty-twenty legislative authority granted to the ACRB involving officer-involved shootings and in custody deaths. I want to provide some context for the ordinance as we move forward. The ordinance changed in twenty-twenty, stating that the board shall also investigate, review, and hold a public hearing for all incidents, including those in which no allegation of misconduct is made, involving officers discharge of a firearm, discharge of a stun gun, or taser in a manner that results in death or serious bodily injury, where a person has died or sustained serious bodily injury while in police custody in all instances of an officer-involved death. When this legislation was introduced and passed nationally, the nation was on the heels of the death of George Floyd. Locally, we had the death of Rashad Brooks and the Atlanta University Center students being tased during George Floyd protests. Citizens wanted to know that someone was looking over the police department's shoulders to make sure that the investigations were done fairly and the outcomes were transparent. As shown on the slide, that was the intent of the twenty-twenty legislation. The intent behind the language was to address the transparency citizens demanded regarding critical incidents and provide assurance that those incidents are independently examined and outcomes of the examinations are communicated to the public. Because the public had an interest in officer-involved shootings and in custody deaths, we wanted to ensure that whether or not a citizen filed a complaint involving a death or serious bodily injury resulting from an officer-involved shooting, the ACRB would be able to provide transparency of the ACRB incident investigation, ensuring that all aspects of the incident were thoroughly investigated and make additional recommendations and policy changes and training as needed. I know this because I worked on drafting the legislation along with assistance of a legal consultant. No one knew that during the following two years, the APD would have a high number of officer-involved shootings and in custody deaths. Now that I've... On this next slide, now that I've set the context and intent of the twenty-twenty legislation, I'll again addressing the two central questions in the resolution. Question one. Did the ACRB leadership fail to act in accordance with the duties assigned to it concerning the public allegations that the agency did not investigate or hold any public hearings or daily uses of force as reported in the January sixteen, twenty twenty-five AJC article? As I go through this information, you will see about what I'm going to tell you, the answer to the question is no, emphatically no. First, the ACRB did not have and does not have a backlog of officer-involved shootings or in custody death investigations. The agency has never experienced a backlog of these types of investigations. The reporter wrote that the Atlanta police have referred thirty-nine incidents to the board since twenty-twenty and found that the board did not investigate any of them. This quote about the referred thirty-nine incidents is misleading and incorrect. The APD does not refer officer-involved shootings to the ACRB. They send the ACRB notifications of the incident. They refer officer-involved shootings to the GBI. The distinction between a referral and a notification is important. The fact is that when the article was published, the ACRB had zero officer-involved shooting incidents, in custody death investigations. And I'm going to explain to you why it is zero. While it was reported that the ACRB had thirty-nine APD incidents, remember these are notifications. Those notifications do not trigger our investigative process, not at that point. A notification is not a complaint. It is an email from the APD to me that an incident occurred. And so here's an example of the email of a notification that we received. As you see in the email, that provides the date of the incident, brief information related to the incident, and who is leading the criminal investigation. This is usually public information that's available to the media outlets, and then we get a copy of it. As you can see in the highlight on the last, in the last paragraph, this is only a preliminary account of the events, and the investigation is ongoing. The Georgia Bureau of Investigations will lead the investigation. That's going to be important to note because when we get further down into the presentation, I'll tell you, Deputy Director will tell you why that's important. Again, notifications are not complaints. And I'm going to tell you about how this process, how we got to this process. Before I get into that, the AJC also reported that the agency was provided with eighteen completed Fulton County District Attorney criminal investigations with a packet of letters. The broad classification of a criminal investigation used in the article insinuates that those completed criminal investigations were officer-involved shootings or in custody incidents where a citizen died or suffered a serious bodily injury. We have no knowledge of that, of what those criminal investigations letters involve. We explained that to the reporter when she showed us one of those letters. We do not know... I mean, we do know that the Fulton County District Attorney's Office can investigate any weapons discharge, whether or not a citizen is killed or injured, which is not our authority. We also know that in September twenty twenty-four, the APD provided the ACRB ten Fulton County District Attorney letters. I'm not sure if any of those letters were the same letters the reporter had in her possession, but only four of the letters APD provided involved an officer-involved shooting or in custody death incidents that were on the ACRB's notification list. Again, the APD did not notify us that any of their investigations were closed. We're going to go to this next slide. This is an email from the reporter where she claimed she had nineteen other officer-involved shootings, which she claimed as officer-involved shootings that the APD did not notify us of. So we checked with the APD. And as you can see from this email from the APD, I mean, this email shows responses of the, to the reporter's questions about these incidents. Well, I'm only showing three here. There are nineteen. And I'll tell you briefly like what most of those were about. But as you can see in the APD's response, when we presented the list to the APD, it was determined that the list contained only one officer-involved shooting death from twenty-twenty that should have been reported to the agency. You see on this email that's on the screen that she had things like pointed firearm and told... No, the classification... This is what she sent us. This is the response. I'm going to... It's important to read this, all right? November sixth, twenty twenty, Officer Matthew Coffin reportedly used reportedly used a firearm against Christopher Perry incident. Number, I believe this is a separate incident from the other officer-involved shootings on November sixth, twenty twenty, that had two deceased and six injured individuals that were already said the ACRB was notified of. APD response, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Pointed firearm and told Mills to drop weapon. Officer did not discharge firearm. But she classified it as an officer-involved shooting. So anyway, here's a list of these. Things like officer shot a deer because it was hit by a car, shot a dog, you know, pointed firearm at someone. Going to the next page. So, you know, before I even go to the next page, why I bring up all of this? I bring it up because it answers two of the questions, the central questions I was talking about earlier. The misleading information in the article does provide it to you, to the public, is why I'm here today, to clear that up, right? So that's why I'm bringing it up today because this agency is based on integrity. I'm based on integrity. It's about establishing trust with the community. And that's what we've always worked hard to do. When people don't understand the process, don't understand the procedures in place, or want to make things the way that they want to make them, it causes challenges for us and the community. I digress for a moment, but I'm going to get back on my presentation. At this next slide, slide eight, and slide nine, you're going to see three tables. The first table is what we had in our office, January sixteenth, as it relates to officer-involved shootings, notifications, and particularly the closure of an investigation that would trigger our trigger our process, which Deputy Director Robertson is going to go to in a minute. As you see on January sixteenth, the date of the article, APD had not reported any closed officer-involved shootings or in custody death investigation closure notification to the agency. The table below that table shows that on February tenth, the ACRB received three closed APD officer-involved shooting files from the APD. Those files were provided to the ACRB twenty-five days after the January sixth article, sixteenth article. You'll see on here where they noticed that four closures. The fourth file had not been handed over because it was going through, because it is going through the Atlanta Civil Service Board as an officer appeal. Once that process concludes, the ACRB will include, will receive the file and identify it as closed and received in our records to go through our process. On slide nine, the APD reconciled this data to conform with the requirements of reporting for officer-involved shootings that included involved a death or serious bodily injury and in custody deaths. We're talking about deaths and/or serious bodily injury as being what we're notified of. So what they did is a reconciliation of the data to conform with the requirements of reporting by removing those incidents that did not involve a death or serious bodily injury from the list of officer-involved shooting and in custody death notifications list. As you will see, the APD has twenty-nine open officer-involved shootings and in custody death investigations. The three officer-involved shootings and in custody deaths that the ACRB had received are now at two because of the reconciliation. These two are in the ACRB are in the ACRB process to be reviewed and investigated. The other file provided to the... The file that was, that's missing from this three that is now two, since it was provided, we will still process it according to our, our process. Again, as evidence shows, the backlog of open OIS, OID investigations was and is not an ACRB issue. That's an issue that, 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 that is with the APD. The ACRB did not receive any officer-involved shooting in custody investigation closure notifications prior to January sixteenth article. And again, we advised the reporter that no closure notifications had been received prior to the publication of the article. So the ACRB investigative review had not been triggered. I took time to explain this to the reporter, to explain the process to her, to explain how we handle our cases. Now, we have processes in place for a reason. Now, the problem with the process, that's something we talk about. But a citizen doesn't get to come in and tell us how to do our process because you don't know our process. You don't know what it all takes. All right, moving on to the next slide. The second question of the resolution. Oh, I didn't change it earlier. Okay, well, that slide there shows the twenty-nine open cases and the two that we did receive after the reconciliation. My apologies. Okay, on this next slide, where we're talking about the questions from the resolution. Question number two. Is a strategic legislative overhaul necessary to expedite the conclusion of critical ACRB investigations to address the concerns raised in the AJC January twenty-sixth, January sixteenth article? The simple answer is no. I'm going to tell you why. Since there were no open officer-involved shootings and custody death cases in the ACRB office at the same, at the time of the article, the question of a strategic legislative overhaul to address concerns raised in the January sixteenth AJC article to address those concerns raised is mute. Under our process, we didn't have anything open. She knew that. So the question of whether something should be happening based on the nonexistence of open cases of a backlog is not the question that we need to, I feel is not the question that needs to be asked. The next, next slide, hopefully you all can see it, they get the, oh. They may not be able to see it from here. Oh, you have, oh, okay. Okay. Yeah, yeah, sorry about that. Okay, at this point, I was talking about the process and why we don't have these open cases. Well, we have two now. But while we didn't have any open cases at the time, so I'm gonna have Deputy Director Robertson come up and speak to our process and what triggers our investigation. What triggers it, right? Deputy Director Robertson?
Thank you, Director Reed, and good afternoon. As shown on slide 11, the ACRB officer-involved shooting and in custody death process is as follows. APD notifies the Executive Director via email that an officer-involved shooting or in custody death has occurred. And an example of that email was previously shown to you all on slide six. The incident is then logged into our database and assigned a tracking number. We then monitor the APD's investigation by following up with them on a quarterly basis for a status update. If they advise that their investigation is closed, we request a copy of their investigative file. We will then inquire with Fulton County's District Attorney's Office to determine if they have an active criminal investigation into the incident. If they do and their investigation is still open, then our investigative process will not begin until the conclusion of their investigation. If they don't have a pending investigation or their investigation is closed and have declined to prosecute, then we will request a copy of their investigative file. We will then review the OPS and DA's investigative file to determine if the incident falls within the agency's scope of the ordinance, meaning did the incident involve a death or serious bodily injury? If not, then we will complete a closing memo and submit it to the board for dismissal. The matter is closed and no further action is taken. If the incident involved a death or serious bodily injury, then we will proceed with our investigative process. After the investigation is completed, the findings are presented to the board for their review and determination. The board's recommendations of findings are then sent to the APD chief, the council, the mayor, the involved officers, and are posted on our website.
Thank you, Deputy Director Robertson. Now I want to take the moment to explain why this has been our established process. I presume that when the agency started in 2008, with bare minimum funding and strong resistance, the process was probably viewed as efficient and at least likely process to face the fierce opposition to the agency's authority at that time. While the 2020 changes grant the ACRB the ability to initiate investigations without a signed complaint following an officer-involved shooting incident with a death or in custody death, the agency has never been funded to the level to conduct a ground-up investigation into those types of incidents. And when I say ground-up, I mean from this, from the scene. Putting the expensive duplication of services to the side for a moment, any consideration for a ground-up investigation will require a minimum follow-up. We would need a memorandum of understanding with the APD that provides immediate notification and access to this incident scene. If the APD is leading an investigation, if the GBI is leading an investigation, we'd need a memo, an MOU memorandum of understanding with the GBI to allow the ACRB immediate access to the incident scene, evidence and parties of the incident, to avoid allegations of interference with their criminal investigations. For the consideration, on this, on this slide here, you'll see some of the things that we need and dollar amounts that would potentially go with that. But for consideration of this type of investigation, we looked at the city of Chicago, who has a civilian oversight agency with similar authority that's authorized to receive no less than 1% of the city of Chicago's department annual budget. That office conducts investigations from the incident scene and has a shooting team of investigators. Now, Chicago is much larger than Atlanta. So you're gonna see, when I say this number, you, you, you'll be like, oh my goodness. The city of Chicago's oversight has a budget of 18.3 million with 157 employees for its approximately 11,600 officers. But let's take the, the authorized amount and work with that. The ACRB has a personnel budget that is 0.5% half of 1% of the APD's personnel budget. If the agency personnel budget was 1% of the APD's personnel budget, the ACRB would need a budget of 2.45 million. I'm trying to dig a little deeper into this part. We could initiate, you know, these shootings from the, from the incident by building out a shooting team ourselves. We could add three more investigators on top of what we already have, on top of anything that may be considered for our shooting team. On the slide on the screen, you'll see in these rough numbers, three additional investigators, 70K, 70,000. Shooting team manager, 80,000. Administrative technical support, 50,000. Independent legal expert, 250 to 500 dollars an hour. Of course, that would be contracted. Independent autopsy expert, 3,000 to 5,000 per autopsy. Contracted with an independent medical expert, 400 plus an hour. Independent use of force, use of force expert, 250 to 450 dollars an hour. Independent forensic expert, 250 to 500 dollars an hour. And we need additional office space for the shooting team. Additionally, after checking with the law department, since the APD currently refers this officer-involved shooting death and in custody death cases for criminal investigations to the GBI and defer its administrative investigations until the GBI and Fulton County District Attorney's Office have completed their investigations. APD would not have any evidence in its criminal or administrative investigative file that would, that would have already been gathered related to those incidents. So, the ACRB would really have to wait, would really have to begin the investigation with zero evidence. And therefore, they would still have to wait until the, the conclusion of the GBI and Fulton County District Attorney's Office to complete its officer-involved shooting in custody death investigations without having that MOU with those, with those agencies. With the GBI and the Fulton County District Attorney. The city charter does not grant the ACRB any authority to obtain information from the GBI or Fulton County District Attorney during an open investigation. We will also need to account for the time that it would take to coordinate with our experts to review and write reports for the investigations. In recent conversations, it was determined on average, officer-involved shooting in custody death cases can take at least two years before the cases could get to the ACRB. Now, this is important, the last thing that the ACRB wants to do is to investigate without all available evidence. Our process is dedicated to, is dedicated to thorough and complete investigations. We do not want to be the agency that makes a decision only to later find out that critical information was missing from the investigation. The families, the public, officers, and you all would not be satisfied with that type of outcome. And now that would be a dereliction of duty. Next slide. We're looking at, this slide, you're looking at the budget spent and complaints assigned. The two boxes on this, on the, on the, on this chart indicates what COVID was and the vacancies and remote working office space now available. I'm gonna get into that. On slide 13, you would notice that the complaints assigned dipped in 2020 because of COVID. It started to clean, it started to decline in late 2021. This was an unfortunate period because APD had a high number of officer-involved shootings and custody deaths in '21 and '22. We had anticipated an increase in complaints as the COVID restrictions relaxed and people started moving about again. But with the high number of officer-involved shootings and in custody deaths and in, and in anticipation of those investigations closing at some point, we decided to reclassify a staff position for an additional investigative position to handle the investigations. That brought us up to four. What we did not anticipate after COVID was the loss of a very experienced investigator who left to double her salary at another oversight agency. And we did not anticipate how difficult it would be to attract well-qualified candidates for our vacant investigative positions. That's why you would notice in the 2023 column, the drop in expenses. This drop is attributed to the vacancies in personnel and operational expenses because staff mostly worked remotely due to delays in our new office construction and repairs that had to be done during that reconstruction. In January 2024, the agency moved into its new office space. Throughout 2024, the agency hired four investigators. However, two did not complete their training before they resigned because they did not meet performance expectations. Another hiree had to rescind his acceptance due to personal reasons. Thankfully, one of the new hires began in December 2024 and is currently in training. So currently, we have two investigators and two vacant investigative positions. And when I say two investigators, that's one investigator with one investigator in, in, in training. Our investigators, new investigators, the training process for them is about six to nine months, depending on how they start and where they start in their ability. So there's always gonna be that lag time. We have been diligently trying to hire for the investigative positions since 2022. It's been extremely difficult to find well-qualified candidates to hire for $50,000. Because most of that time, we were hiring in an, in an employee's market. However, after complaining to HR about the salary changes, the salary challenges, we received approval to hire at a rate at a higher above rate at $53,000. That's a $3,000 increase. So you take that and you look at this slide and say, well, you know, it looks like they have money to hire investigators. The issue is this, well-qualified investigators are not knocking down the door for $50,000. Not these days. It's not, it's just not happening like that. Candidates have tell, tell us, I admire the work that the agency does and I have the experience to do it, but I can't take care of my family on that amount. Those candidates are already making more than what we are offering them. So what can you say to that? Also, it's important to note that while we have 14 authorized FTEs, full-time employees, we have only been funded for nine of the 14 positions. Now, I heard the comments about hiring some temporary workers to conduct investigations. Not to disparage anybody's job because it's honor and dignity in all work, but the expectations for the quality of our investigations that impact citizens and officers' livelihood and lives require us to be very specific about the experience, temperament, skill level, and understanding of the purpose and mission of the agency. Our files, they got a file right there, our files, when we're doing our investigations, it's not just a little one-two sheet thing, you know, checking boxes and stuff like that. They're, they're files like that. Like the one right here, where we're talking about two, three inches, especially depending on the complexity of the investigation. So we, we can't afford to lower the bar when it comes to hiring our investigators. Because it only takes one bad investigation, one bad interview experience, to rock the boat and invite criticism and destroy the trust of the agency that we've built up over the years. You know, when we talk about trust, you know, I've thought a little bit about this AJC article, about all the hard work that we've been out there in the community doing things, trying to convince people they have a place to go to get, get their concerns addressed. And I said, well, what can we do about that? So I had an idea, I think that, you know, one of the things that we need to do that we should consider that I plan on asking for is an additional $50,000 for more community outreach to remedy the reputational damage that's been caused by this AJC article. Everything that we do is built on integrity and trust. And, you know, if we don't have that with the citizens, the citizens will feel they don't have anywhere else to go. So they figure they have to just handle it themselves. Or just wait until an incident and and express themselves out in the streets. That's not what we want. So the next slide is slide 14. On this slide, you also notice that the number of complaints assigned to a full investigation steadily increased after COVID. In 2024, the ACRB assigned 116 complaints to a full investigation, representing 53% of the complaints received. Currently, the agency has 145 regular investigations, complaint, active complaint investigations for the one investigator and the one investigator in training. for the one investigator and the one investigator in training. You know, and over the past couple of weeks too, I heard somebody say, you know, we probably shouldn't be spending so much time and attention on what they would say are less serious complaints. You know, where nobody died, nobody had to go to the hospital, you know. To the man or woman who cannot get a job because of a false arrest or can't get their only car repaired after an accident because of an incorrect police report, or that father who was embarrassed in front of his wife and kids, their complaints are not less serious. See, the ACRB, all complaints matter. All complaints, and citizens receive the same level of attention to detail through thorough and fair investigations. Let me give you an example real quick. Take Miss Hill. She filed a complaint against an officer who displayed a lack of courtesy during a service call to her house when he refused to move his patrol car from sitting on her lawn and sitting on her water line. She was upset about the car sitting on her water line because if it broke, who's going to be responsible for it? The officer refused to call his supervisor as requested by citizen. After back-and-forth conversation about her service call, report, and his parked car on her lawn, the officer got into his patrol car and stated how he hates effing people and then shouted to Ms. Hill's family members, "Don't call me again." During the investigation, it was learned that when the supervisor responded to her second call to file a complaint on the officer's behavior, the supervisor acknowledged that the officer's behavior was nothing, as nothing new. That's how she got to us. Because obviously, it must have been a problem to other people too. The board and APD sustained the complaint against the officer. So yes, all complaints matter. We're going to go into some of the other activities that the agency is involved in. You know, years ago, somebody asked me during the Finance Committee meeting, "Well, Lee, you know, why are you doing this outreach stuff? You know, it seems like that's going to generate complaints. Make more work for yourself." You know, at the end of the day, we want citizens to know we exist and we want them to feel comfortable bringing stuff to us. Our primary job is always going to be conducting investigations, making adjudications, providing information to the APD. So where changes need to be made, they can be made. Where officers need to be disciplined, they can be disciplined. But right now, I'm going to have Deputy Director Marla Smith come up and talk about some of the other things that we do as it relates to our work.
Thank you, Director Reed. Good afternoon, council members. I want to provide information in reference to any concern that you may have had about the lack of transparency of the ACRB's operation. You know, since its inception, the agency has provided updates on its work through annual reports. And since August 2007, monthly board minutes, board determination letters dating back to 2009 have been posted on the website. There's a lot of information about the ACRB in its current form. And we've been in business now for over 17 years. The ACRB started appearing on the Public Safety and Legal Administration Agenda in 2020. And during that time, the agency provided 11 quarterly reports, including information on the number of officer-involved shootings and in custody deaths. So we were a bit concerned when people said that they didn't know. Receiving during the quarter the number of deaths and shootings that we had received for every quarter that we were reporting, the location, and when the agency would initiate an investigation into those incidents. The agency also provides direct reporting to the City Council, Mayor's Office, and the general public through monthly emails following each board meeting, and information on its outreach activities through the website, newsletters, and ACRB's YouTube channel. In addition to the monthly, quarterly, and annual reports that staff provides, each board member has an obligation to file a written quarterly report with their appointing authorities. Now, since 2012, ACRB has been transparent with all of its actions and challenges. When the issues were impacting the operation, those issues have been raised to the appropriate parties. Despite, I'm sorry, despite the staff funding challenges and lack of suitable office space for most of its existence, our dedicated staff investigated over 550-plus full investigations. The board has made hundreds of decisions and recommendations to the police and corrections and handled thousands of intakes. That's in addition to those 550 full investigations. We also provided education to the public about their rights and responsibilities, the process of how to file complaints, and how to review and how the review board operates. We are not an agency that hides behind our office doors waiting for citizens to find us. We go to the communities. You see us out there in the communities. You see our vehicles moving around the communities. We don't hide behind our doors. Most of you have seen our billboard ads, heard or seen our TV and radio commercials, seen our mobile units, we have two on the streets, or seen our ads on the martyr trains, and seen, as I said, your events. Because we call your offices and find out if you have some community events going on that weekend or whenever so that we can engage. Normally, on the average, we will do something over the period of a year, we will do anywhere from 120 to 160 events. Our integrity is always on the line because we're constantly moving in and out of communities. The agency has been innovative and proactive in its approach to addressing citizen concerns. With the creation of the mediation programs, pilot programs for community surveys, trauma groups for citizens who have experienced officer misconduct, you should hear some of our calls in reference to that trauma, creation of a volunteer program, establishing the Integrity Street Team to support our outreach efforts because we have such a small team, establishing a mobile unit program, the one I just talked about, creation of a pilot educators program to introduce Know Your Rights training based on the Georgia socioeconomic standards for school-aged youth. And we also created, and we're very proud of that, our superhero mascot for children. We also have created and put together a complaint portal for citizens to check in on their status of their complaints. We hold board meetings in the communities. We take the work of the board to the community. We have a creation of an annual community survey program, and that's going to be implemented this year, and many other creative community engagement initiatives to promote education and increase dialogue with community members, all of which have been cost-effective approaches. And most recently, I'm sure you've seen ads or flyers or something in reference to our art and essay contests. And I'm very proud to announce that we've met the deadline, we're past the deadline, we're looking at the entries. And I'm very proud to announce that we had over 400-plus entries and those, we're looking at, you know, we're reviewing all the artwork, all the essays, and the verbal expressions. And we hope soon to contact the council staff so that we can get them on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reed, we are going to need to wrap up and go into our question and answer session at this time.
Okay.
Did you want to give a closing statement?
This last slide, because we actually need to end. This last slide is talking about what's been done since the since the January 16th article.
Mr. Reed, I think we can take some questions and that will go into it. If you don't mind, at this time, we like to go into questions and answers.
Okay.
Is that okay with the body, without any objection? We go into our questions and answers at this time. Mr. Reed, we have a responsibility to the families and our citizens to ensure that transparency in any officer-involved shooting is at the forefront of everything we do, especially those that are with severe injury or loss of life. The purpose of this forum is so that we can come up with a productive resolution to any issues that your board might be facing. We do have questions for you, and we'd like to proceed with those at this time. What processes have you put in place to ensure your agency is notified of all firearms discharged?
Thank you, Chair Boone. Okay, so the ordinance does not require us to be notified of all firearm discharges. It requires us to be notified of firearm discharges that cause death or serious bodily injury. So the process that's in place about that is APD will notify us through the email that I showed you earlier that this incident occurred on this date, this time, involving these individuals. That's the way it's been working throughout. Now, the second part of that, though, is where we run into the issue. And that's what we've been working on since. And that's ensuring that when the APD completes this process or GBI completes this investigative process that goes to the ACRB, I mean, to the APD, that we get notification of that that it's closed so that we can start initiating our process of the investigation. When we get that notification, that's when we'll be able to do that. At the time of the article, we did not have any of those. So we met with Chief Sherbahn and several times with Mayor Dickens' Chief Strategy Officer, Peter Aina, and his team, Lilly Madali and Thomas Doxy. We have identified several opportunities for the ACRB and APD to improve processes in a collaborative spirit. I want to thank Peter and his team for taking the time to understand the ACRB's work, processes, and challenges. And this is where I was talking about what we were doing related to it. And I can go into that further with the next question.
One of our members will have to leave soon, so we want to hear from her. But, Mr. Reed, are you familiar with the Code, Section 12.2, which says that "ACRB shall investigate, review, and hold a public hearing for all incidents, including those in which allegations of misconduct is made involving an officer's discharge of a firearm and an officer's discharge of a stun gun or taser in a manner that results in death or seriously bodily injury, where a person has died or sustained serious bodily injuries?"
Yes, that's, yes.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from Councilmember Ishay Collins.
Actually, that was my question in terms of the processes that he just laid out. One question I also wanted to get my notes. Asked about, and it's just a general one, based on the chart, you said you have two open cases that aligns with your investigator, investigation process flow. But then there is also this gap, well, not gap, where you said there was nine non-reportable incidents that took your number down from 40 to 31 notifications. And that is on your, that's on slide nine?
On slide?
Yes, on between slide eight and nine. So as of February, February the 10th, there was 40 notifications and 37 open investigations. But as of last Thursday, the removal of non-reportable incidences, it went from 31 to 29. And so it shows, I guess, a difference of nine non-reportable incidents. And I'm just curious, is that information shared with you all as well to understand what, and what is deemed those non-reportable incidences?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Collins. As I was stating earlier, throughout this process last month, we've been working with the Strategic Team and APD. And one of the issues that we identified is that APD was providing us information that wasn't conforming with the ordinance as it relates to officer-involved shooting death or in custody death. And some of those numbers were included in that original number of 40. They took out those notifications and it left them with 29 that they have on their side of the House that are open investigations. That's where that 29 number, those 29 are not with us, it's with them. But it went from 40 to 29.
And you don't activate an ACRB investigation until the police investigations are closed, correct?
Correct. The police investigation is closed and the Fulton County District Attorney letter saying that they closed their investigation as well.
And then on slide 14, just so I'm clear in terms of understanding the movement as well, for 2024, you, there was 219 complaints that was filed, but 116 complaints assigned to full ACRB investigations. What, I guess I just kind of answered my own question, sorry about that. In terms of just understanding the magnitude, and I think it aligns with your slide that you talked about in terms of hiring additional investigators?
That was, yes, that was the slide before.
Yes.
Yes. They sort of, they worked, they smashed together, but they separated from slide 13 and slide 14. Because you see that dotted line on slide 13 that talks about, the dotted orange line? That's the complaints assigned number. And then on slide 14, And then on Slide 14, where you have the blue bar with 116, that's the complaints assigned number as well.
So currently, how many total full ACRB investigations do you have right now?
Actively open?
Yes.
Yes, 145.
And how many investigators you have?
Currently, we have one full investigator and one investigator in training. We're authorized to have four. That's been the challenge, trying to hire those investigators at $50,000.
So then, so then in terms of, and this is my last question, Chair, Chairman, Chairwoman Boone, you go to the, you talk about the employees that are, that you need. So going back to Slide 12, just for clarity, at the bottom, there's this additionally $50,000 to correct the reputational harm done to the agency. What, what cost is that?
Oh, that's because of the outreach that we're gonna have to do. That's not necessary for staff. That's for just media outreach that we're gonna need to do to make, ensure people, to let people know that, look, we're still here doing business the way that we've been doing business. This article has generated concern amongst some folks, and we want to make sure that people still have the confidence and know that they can come to the agency and file complaints.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mr. Reed, at no point were any of these issues brought to the committee's attention. When it was brought to our attention, we moved swiftly with getting funding for investigators. And now the Honorable Dustin Hillis. We never knew that you were short investigators. That was never brought to our attention. At the point that you brought that to our attention, we swiftly moved into action.
Yes, we swiftly moved into action. As far as, yeah, I'm gonna leave it there, okay? Yes.
Thank you, Chairwoman Boone. Uh, thank you for the presentation, Executive Director Reed. The Chairwoman already read part of the code. But to preface my question, I'm gonna restate it as this, this body revised it back a few years ago. And it reads, "ACRB shall," and that's a very important legal term.
Yes, it is.
It doesn't say "may." It says "shall investigate, review, and hold a public hearing for all incidents, including those which no allegation of misconduct is made involving any officer's discharge of a firearm and an officer's discharge of a stun gun or taser in a manner that results in death or serious bodily injury, where a person has died or sustained serious bodily injury while in police custody and all incidents of officer-involved death." However, at least what I gathered from most of your pushback, which, I mean, this presentation seemed to be more of an attack on a investigative journalism article and a reporter than a presentation to this committee. But you, I believe, are blatantly incorrect by the letter of the law that you stated multiple times, the reason this wasn't investigated was you never received an official complaint. And that is not what our city code says. Uh, it says, as I stated, that it shall be investigated, and including of those which you do not receive official complaints on, uh, which you have just received notice on, which you presented the evidence to us today that you received notice, but the excuse was an official complaint was not received. Uh, so I don't know where that disconnect is.
First, the "shall" is correct, right? The process is we get the notification that something happened so that we can contract it, so that we can track it and be aware of it, right? Under the process, when APD has completed its investigation of a death or in custody death, officer-involved shooting death, or in custody death, at that point, then we know we can move forward with our investigation. It's not a question of, well, maybe we gonna do it, maybe we're not gonna do it. It's right at that time for us to do the investigation. No one has ever said, "We're not gonna do an investigation." No one has said, "Oh, yeah, well, maybe we'll do this one, maybe that one." No. When we get the notice of these, of like the 29 that we were just talking about, when they close those investigations, they shall and will be investigated. That's the way it works. That's the process of it. Now, if we're talking about something different, then we can have that conversation about something different. But to say that, to say that, um, this report seems more like an attack on the journalist. No, it's correcting the facts. Facts are important. Our process for an investigation, it's not saying we're not gonna investigate. It's not saying that we, these things are referred to us for the investigation. They're not referred. They're notified, once we get the notification, then we, when we get the, the next step, they complete their investigation, APD, GBI, Fulton County District Attorney's Office, then we can do our investigation. It's not, it's not a thing of not doing anything.
So the problem is, at least that I see it, you are tasked, your, your body is tasked, the ACRB is tasked with investigating, once you have a notice. There is nothing in our code that states that you have to wait until basically you're handed on a silver platter the findings of APD and the GBI. You are an investigative agency that has subpoena power, that can conduct your own investigations. You don't have to wait and say, "Oh, here APD, here ACRB, we've done all your work for you. Now you can investigate, investigate." So I would like to see, what, how often do you send out subpoenas?
Thank you, Councilmember Hillis. Glad you brought that up. To do what you just talked about was what I was speaking of if we're gonna do a ground-up investigation. I'd love to be able to do a ground-up investigation.
No one mentioned anything about a ground-up investigation. What I mean is, once you receive notice, you can start an investigation. And if you've done all that you can do until you receive those documents, evidence, et cetera, from the APD and/or GBI investigations, sure, that can improve your investigation. But there should be something on the front end from an investigative agency that has subpoena power.
Okay, so if I'm understanding you correctly, if I'm understanding you correctly, you would like to see the agency, when it gets a notice, subpoena APD, if they have an open case, subpoena GBI, and subpoena Fulton County District Attorney's Office. We can do that. If that's what you would like to see us do.
Well, I'm not the Executive Director of the ACRB. You are.
I am, exactly. And that's, and that's why we're
You are the Executive Director of it.
The established process.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
Um, you are the Executive Director and have been for a number of years
That's right.
of the ACRB, an investigative agency that has subpoena power. You all should not wait until an investigation is handed to you on a silver platter to at least some, to start some shape, form, or fashion of an investigation. But that seems to be, is it, is it your stance that you cannot, should not, will not start an investigation until you get a closure and all of the findings sent to you from APD or the GBI?
No, my stance is that since 2008, there's a process in place that based on the difficulties that the, that the oversight agency experienced, the lack of funding to be able to have investigators do those types of investigations at that time that you're talking about, is a challenge. My stance is that if the body wants us to not use the process, then we can, we can talk about that. Our goal is to ensure that citizens have a trusted body to come to and do investigations. Since 2008, we've done 10, I mean, five officer-involved shootings. Each of those investigations followed that process. Each of those investigations went before the board, went over to the chief after he finished it. No one, no one has complained about the process that we have followed. Now, now I'm hearing, hearing concerns about the process. And if those, if those concerns are something that we can work out and discuss, then maybe we should look at that, to see all of the, everything is included in that. See, for one of the things, if the GBI is doing an investigation, they control all of that information. Now, we could issue a subpoena to see if we can get it. We can, if we have an MOU with the, with the, with the GBI, to go on to their incident, on to the scene of the shooting, then we could do that. Because once they have this control of the scene, they have it. As I stated earlier, if they have a control of the scene, APD doesn't have anything. We would have to work that out with them. Now, the difference would be, if the APD is doing an investigation, we can get all of that information from them. But under the way the process was, that's what, that's the way, that's the way it was done in the past. And so we continue with that until now we have these complaints based on the article that says 39 referred to us that we just didn't want to do anything with, which is patently false. Because we don't take these types of complaints seri-, uh, we, we take all of these complaints seriously. All of them, everything. I'm, look. These types of complaints impact all of us, right? Particularly people who look like me. So for someone to say that I just didn't want to do something or waiting for, or didn't want to do something about these types of complaints, that's a lie. And to say, and to say that, look. We take these jobs seriously, and we're not waiting on anybody to give us anything on those silver platter. But what we will do is follow our process. And when the process changes, we'll follow that process. If the process changes, we'll do that. But to say, "Oh, well, you're just gonna sit back and wait like we're just sitting around thumbing it on our thumbs," that's never been the case, it won't ever be the case. And people that know us and know the work that we do and take the time to really understand what we do, they know that. Even when we get a case from the APD, we're gonna do what we need to do to investigate it. We're going through the statements, making sure that they ask the questions right. If we need to interview somebody again, we're gonna interview them. If, if, if they mention something in a case and they didn't follow up on it, guess what? We're gonna take care of that. This is not a thing of someone shirking their responsibilities. And that's why, when I wanted to correct the facts, because that's what you got from the article.
Mr. Reed, can we move on to the next question?
I think we've gotten off of answering the questions, but the, you brought up process, and you also brought up 2008, when this agency was created 17 years ago. So this body, I was on it, Chairwoman Boone was as well, in 2020, massively overhauled at least the code as it has to do with ACRB. The processes by which you all conduct your investigations are, is pretty much set by the ACRB, and I imagine you as the Executive Director. So after the City Council greatly changed the ACRBs, at least the code that pertains to the ACRB, like the one I just read a few minutes ago, how did you all change your processes to better follow and conform with those changes in 2020?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Hillis. We merely put it in a process to reflect what the 2020 code said about, you know, these critical incidents. I, I could have provided that to you, I'll provide that to you. And if, once she's talking about critical incidents, what we need to do. The other talks about how these investigations would be done, what needs to be done, what steps need to be done, and all of those things, right? The reality of it is, under that process, under that process, we have the experience from the five citizen sign complaints that we received. But under the process, related to that 2020 code change, we haven't had any investigations from them. Now, you said, uh, so we have the documentation of our processes laying out the steps that we have to take related to those investigations, yes?
So, in your presentation, there is an ask, which the Chairwoman stated that some of those asks are, are new to us, and when we receive requests, we are generally fairly quick to act on them. And we're getting this, an entire page of requests. And I'll, I'll stop there and say, you know, budget season is upcoming. I look forward to your budget presentation, but you have all these requests and talked about, you know, the investigators that you needed and underpaid, yet in fiscal year '23, you seem to have underspent your budget by almost, or around a half a million dollars.
Are you, are you referring to Page 12?
Well, 12 is, is, is what looks like your ask.
No, sir.
Plus aside what we just passed last, uh, council, um, session for the additional investigators and their salaries.
Councilmember Hillis, this, what you're looking at at Page 12 is the hypothetical of if we were doing those investigations from the moment we received a, a notice, being able to go out to the scene, being able to, uh, uh, make sure that we had these experts. This is not for the current process. No, this is not an ask for the current process. This is if we decided, or you all decided, to say, "Oh, you know what? We want them to start it from the moment they get this, uh, uh, the complaint. We want to have an investigator out there that's rounding up folks, that's taking pictures, that's making sure that the officer has access to the officer to be able to interview the officer. And then when we get all that stuff, we want to be able to have the, uh, these independent people to be able to do the things necessary, right? That's what that is. This is not an ask here. This is a what-if that was based off of the agency that does similar work to what we would be tasked with doing. Because with our current staff, we don't have a forensic investigator, or, I mean, forensic expert or any of those people on staff. We would have to contract that out. We would have to contract that out. That's stuff that we would have to do. And you can't do those types of complex investigations without, and independently, without having experts to be able to look at the autopsy, to be able, and if it's, that's if it's a death. If it's not a death, it's a medical expert. To be able to, uh, have the, the use of force expert, to be, where's my word? To be able to have the use of expert, use of force expert, to be able to explain what occurred and whether, whether proper. To be able to have a forensic expert to be able to talk about the trajectories and, and the, and the, and the evidence as it relates to the scientific evidence that relates to the investigation. That's what I'm talking about, the hypothetical. The what-if, if we wanted to do these ground up from the scene type of investigations. If we're not talking about that, which we were not talking about, this was an example, then we're talking about, yes, the legislation that was passed last week, great. As long as it's enough for us, enough money to be able to attract well qualified candidates. If we're talking about adding people, but not increasing the salary offer, we're just going to have more vacancies sitting there and not being able to do the work. So we have to be able to have the salary that will attract the people who will be able to do the job. Look, the gentleman who, we sent his offer. He was retired, uh, he recently retired from a local police department. He'd done use of force investigations. He'd been involved in death investigations. Great guy, would have been a great addition to us. Unfortunately, personal reasons, he couldn't come in. He couldn't take the job yet. But he was willing to do it. We had another one before that, really good. They couldn't do it because the salary was too low. They were already making, already making eighty thousand.
That, right? Your, your ask was more investigators and an increased salary?
Yes.
We have addressed that?
Unfortunately, I know that we talked about the increase as it relates to, um, the numbers. I haven't been able to, let me say it like this, um, I still need to be, need to talk with finance to make sure that we are looking at the correct numbers to be able to hire folks. But we've been in that situation before where we've gotten people and haven't gotten the money to go with them. That's why right now, we have fourteen authorized positions, but funded only for nine. They told me a couple of weeks, a few weeks ago, a few, a couple of months ago. Finance, in HR, no, HR, told me that, hey, you know, you can hire these two? No, it was finance. You can hire these two positions, but when you go to try to hire the other two, you're going to have some problems because you don't have the money. What? What do you mean we don't have the money? Oh, you know, you only, you only funded for nine. How can I be only funded for nine when I have fourteen? Well,
Well, speaking of funding, just getting a couple of questions ago answered that, that never got answered. I mean, I know it would be, have to be re-appropriated probably, but, you know, if you get budgeted for a few million dollars and you underspend a fiscal year budget by half a million, what was the, I mean, there, there's a number of underspent budgets, but 2023 was definitely the most significant. So, uh, 2021 wasn't much better and you, you referenced COVID, but what was the anomaly in 2023 for that?
Yes, as I explained, as I explained during the, the presentation, as I explained during the presentation, that's related to the vacancies that we had on staff. That's related to the fact that we weren't doing as much outreach and operational costs because we weren't able to be in our space at that time. There were delays, delays, delays with us getting our space completed on the first floor. For the first fifteen years that we were in business, we were stuck on the ninth floor in a little corner, well, in a, in a little space. As the department grew, we were stuck there. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we were able to secure the space on the first floor. Twenty twenty-one, twenty, we were able to secure the place on the, the space on the first floor. We were happy. We thought we were going to be in like that. That didn't happen. That didn't happen because then there was a flood of the area, then there was the, uh, trying to get the, Dean had a lot of things going on. So we, we weren't able to get into the space until January twenty twenty-four. That impacted operations. That impacted us slowing, slowing us down to be able to bring in the people that we need to bring in. So we had those vacancies. Yes, we recognize that. And we're glad to be beyond that.
All right, thank you for that. And
Oh, and twenty twenty-one, also, that was in COVID.
Right, yeah.
So we're not doing outreach, you know, outreach was limited during that time.
Yeah, I referenced that. And so for now, that completes my questions. Uh, Chairwoman Boone, however, once the council was completed, I know that the mayor's tasked, uh, Chief Strategy Officer Aiman, uh, with working on some of these issues. And I don't know if that was already your plan, but we'd love to hear from him at the end.
The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
I, I want to say thank you so much for this report. And I see the, I see the intention in making sure you answered the questions that were actually out there. I understand the fifty thousand dollars of a fixing of the reputation because we're trying to get people to trust what we're trying to do downtown. So I, I even understand why you're asking for that request. But I also understand that the AJC can make it right by making sure that, because I think they're seeking, seeking answers. I think that today you laid out a lot of them. So I think that the follow-up story could also do a lot of improvements to the reputation. I think what I heard today is Chicago gets one percent of, of their police department budget. And it helps them run their department a little better. And so I, I, I would love to see one percent of, because we see APD budget go up every, every single year in the city of Atlanta. And what I've seen in District Twelve is twenty-two percent drop while we've had police officers more at the police training facility, more at the, right now, it sounds like they're going to be sending police officers to parking lots, to guard parking lots. So in, in my district, what we've done is we've tried to eliminate Zone Three having to come for certain issues. And we've been able to throw different spaghetti on the walls, is what I call it. But it's been working because we looked at different cities, similar to you looking at Chicago, knowing that you need at least one percent to fully do it. We've looked at other cities and we've seen how they decreased crime. And we had a twenty-two percent drop in District Twelve. And Zone Three, so imagine what District Twelve is. It's probably higher than that twenty-two percent. But we also had a huge drop last year, and no one else in the city had a higher, had a ten percent drop. And it's not because they increased resources in our district. It's because we increased resources like you. Like Citizens Review Board coming to events in our district, passing out cards, working with churches and, and different type of churches, so different denominations, even a seven-day Adventist church. And, and which you came out into some apartments on Cleveland Avenue, in which they've never, they didn't even know this existed. And we had, so I've been able to see the work in our area. And we, I understand that you say DWB, Driving While Black, and people want to complain, they need somebody to reach out to, and they know they can reach out to the Atlanta Citizen Review Board. And it sounds like you also said, so I heard the one percent, that, that's something, we're looking at budgets right now. He needs one percent. We, we need one percent, right? And I don't, I don't think that we should have to increase the police department budget to get it because District Twelve saw a twenty-two percent drop. And we saw our police officers not working in our district, in our area. And the only thing we did was get people jobs. And so I think you can, and we brought you to talk about different things. We brought Mothers Against Gang Violence and different organizations to make sure that we over-resourced, and I'm so happy to see it happening. And so one percent should be, you could take, I, I can see that happening. I, I know the improvements that are making the city of Atlanta, the trust of people. Another thing that you said was, we have to, do you have a person appointed by APD to talk to about, like streamline this information to you? So you have that?
Yes, uh, thank you, Councilmember Lewis. The deputy director meets with the lieutenant of OPS on a regular basis. I meet, I meet with the, um, the major, the commander of OPS, uh, on a regular basis, usually quarterly.
I feel real good about that.
I meet with the chief. We try to meet semi-annually.
It sounds like we got a line. I want to draw a circle around it because y'all are already meeting. It's, it feels so good about the communication that you all are doing. They need to notify you. So like the, it sounds like APD, all they have to do is notify you, and that could be fixed. Or can you tell me that? Because I've been reading your, I've been going through this PowerPoint the entire time. And the one thing I keep hearing is one percent notification, because you don't know until they tell you. They can tell you on day one if they wanted to, but the protocol that you currently have says, after it's completed, then they have to tell you. And they don't have to tell you, right?
No. They, they notify us of the initial incident when it occurred.
Okay.
Correct? And that, and at that point, we start tracking it. And so then we follow up with them every month, uh, bi-weekly, sometimes, uh, quarterly, whenever I meet with the chief, whenever I meet with the, the commander. Hey, what's going on with the, with the officer involved shootings? You have any completed? You have any completed? No. That's what we've been, we had been told.
So they tell you no.
Right.
And they tell the GBI no. And I don't want to even put in anybody else. They tell you no. And so, where, where do we go from there?
No, they, they would tell us no.
Okay.
And so we continue, then follow up again the next time. No.
Okay.
Right? When the article came out, the answer was still, no, they didn't have any completed. So when I found out that the reporter had a case, had a case, I contacted the APD and said, hey, wait a minute, you guys closed any cases? And then I get the answer, oh, yeah.
So somebody, so, I feel like somebody's been, it feels like you, do you feel misled there? Because I want to make sure we are having a real conversation here. And then because what's on the line right now is them, like, I want to make sure we're having a real conversation here. So are you saying that the police department have told you no about specific cases? You, in your official capacity as Atlanta Citizen Review Board, as you've been tracking the case from day one, they've told you no. And then the investigator researched it, they found out that it's actually closed. And then you reached back out to them. You said, hey, what's up with this case? And they say, oh, I forgot to tell you that we closed it. Uh, is that what you're saying to us?
I'm, I'm saying that
And I apologize. I need an answer there. I apologize on that one, if possible.
The Dorado case? The one that was in the article?
Yes.
Yeah, on, on that case, we did not know that case was closed.
Because they told you it was not closed.
Not, they told us they didn't have any open. I mean, any, they didn't have any closed.
And they told you we don't have any closed, but then the investigator found out it's closed.
Right. And so after, after that, I contacted.
I don't have any questions. I think that's the investigation. There is a lot of the issue. If the police department, if Atlanta Police Department is telling Atlanta Citizen Review Board in their official capacity, that cases are not closed, but they are, if you do an investigation, they're officially closed? And I heard Councilmember Hillis say that you need to use subpoena. We don't want to have to subpoena the same people we're in a circle with. That's not the goal. So my, I, I don't have questions. My goal, my questions are for APD. And how can we streamline this? Because what, what we're doing right now, moving around the city, and I, I, I seen the trust build up of Atlanta Citizen Review Board. I seen the buildup. I have people reaching out to me because they know if, because people are getting pulled over and they're not getting tickets. They're getting pulled over and nothing's happening except the police are sniffing around their cars and they're complaining. And so these are things real. And you're saying that the big item with the police shooting, involved shootings, from what, from what I just heard, you can stop me if I'm wrong, because this will be my last question. You, tell me if I'm wrong. You would ask about specific cases in your, in your official capacity, they would tell you no, even though they're already closed and you didn't know this, you were surprised like us?
I was surprised about that article.
That's my last.
And I was surprised and then, and
How can he do his job officially? How can they do their job officially if we have to investigate the, if you have to subpoena the APD? For what? Why, why do, why do we have to do that when we're trying to do it right? The goal is to do this right. And that's, that's the, the goal is always said, they say one bad apple. And they say system, systems. And I, I keep talking about the system, the system that we're trying to be in. And I don't think it's the people, it's the system. Like, imagine you, them telling you, oh, my bad. I didn't know we closed that one. The, the police know we closed, we got families out here hurt. People want to know what's going on. So I truly appreciate you and I, that's why I see the passion and the intention of what you're saying. Because, and, and it's like they're blaming you. They're blaming ACDC, I mean, Atlanta Citizen Review Board. And we have, you, you only receive your information, you're not waiting on it to be laid out on a platter. You want them to just tell you it's closed. They just want, you don't got to lay this out, man. Just tell them it's closed. And, and that's what I want to see, it closed. Why, how many of these cases do we have? My question to the chair and to the committee is if we can find out how many of these, because he only has two, right?
Yes.
And that, that was a larger number. There's a larger number. These are questions, Ms. Anderson's been coming out here every day and to reach out to the GBI, and they give her an answer faster than APD give us an answer? The, the, chair, I need your help on this, and that's my request. We can find out how many are actually closed. And if it's more than two, can we find out why is it more than two that are closed and he didn't know today? Thank you.
Mr. Overton, if you would, please send that email to Chief Sherbaum and Chief Tyus, and they will get us that information.
Absolutely.
Please send that email to them as soon as possible. Yes.
Chair Boone?
Yes.
On the slide, um, slide twelve, I think. No, slide nine. APD has twenty-nine open incident, open, that they're still currently investigating. Um, twenty-nine that are open. And we received two, and this is after the reconciliation of the, of the officer-involved shootings.
Thank you. Um, we are approaching the full clock, four PM hour. But we do have a couple of more questions for you, Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Um, quickly, if you could tell us, what are the top five critical needs of your office other than financial resources?
Yes. I'm, you know, Councilmember Lewis brought up something. He, he said, you know, AJC's article had, um, brought attention to an issue. So I'm glad that I'm here today because one of the challenges is making sure when we do our reports before, uh, council and when we send out reports and information, the people stay engaged with our work. You know, the people ask questions, the people, uh, participate in what we're trying to tell them. So that would be one thing. Second thing, I've talked to council members about the second eighteen, eighteen to thirty-year-old seat on the board. the second 18 to 30-year-old seat on the board. We need to try to get that filled. And I think council could help us do that. Council has the authority, if a seat is vacant over 90 days, to be able to appoint somebody to it. And then we can figure out the appointing authority later. I think that it would be, it would be great if council can assist us when we're trying to communicate and go out to communities. We have some council members who will let us know something is happening in their community. Hey, can you all show up? Can you come over here? And we show up. We have other council members who we would love to be able to be more present in their districts. And we can't seem to make that connection with them. I think that something else council can help us with. We have an experience, we have some very experienced people on our, on our staff. We always run into risk of losing them. And we tried to deal with that by restructuring, making sure that people had promotion opportunities. But as civilian oversight grows across the country, we do have the risk of people leaving because we can't offer them the type of money that they can get in other jurisdictions. Here's another one that I think would really be helpful. We've been trying to get APD to be a full partner of our mediation program, to be able to deal with these, I hate to say lower level complaints, but they're not, they're not the type of complaints that people aren't necessarily going to just be satisfied with in investigation. They want to be able to talk with the officer and try to resolve it. APD does a wonderful job and control officers are available when we receive a complaint, assigned complaint about those. But I think we, as far as looking now, how we can be proactive with the work that we do in improving relationships between citizens and officers, that if they were a full partner of being able to ensure that their lower level complaints also were included in the mediation program, that would be great. Because if we look at it holistically, we need to be looking at this accountability holistically. Oh, and another, another important issue. We can't talk about public safety, especially as it relates to policing corrections, without making sure that we bring the ACRB into the conversation. And the reason why is because when we talk about more officers, that means potentially more work for the agency. When we talk about different equipment, especially equipment that's going to impact citizens, ACRB needs to be brought into the, into the, into the, into the conversation. Because eventually, we're going to be the ones that's going to have to investigate if something goes wrong. All right, so those are just some things off the top of my head that I think we need to be thinking about for how we can get assistance from council. But what I can do is definitely put together a nice list and provide it to all council members of what we could really use in support.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. We will be asking you to come back before us very soon to get an update on some of the issues that are facing your organization. At this time, we would like to hear from our Chief Strategy Officer, Mr. Peter Amon.
It's kind of like a casino in here. There's no outside light or windows. I'm looking for the drinks, though. The oxygen, maybe? That's part of the trick. I'll be, I'll be brief. This is, all jokes aside, a very serious subject. And the good news is that I think in the last two weeks that we've been working with the ACRB staff and APD, we've made significant progress. You saw the detailed process map. We've identified, obviously, the communications and some other issues that need to be resolved. That resulted in, number one, a critical request and agreement from ACRB, from the chief, which is to have a formal MOU between APD that will lay out not just the things that may be in the code, but the other process elements. Exactly, exactly how do notifications of incidents occur? Exactly how do notifications of closed cases occur? Within what timeframes, through what communication means? And then a series of other, of other details. So that MOU is important. We are working through that. And that will have a whole series of components to it. The second thing I would say is that this process in its entirety needs to go faster, right? I mean, it just does. And that has to be balanced with the importance to the families and the officers in the organization of getting, of getting these investigations right. You have multiple investigations, right? We have four basically parallel organizations here. ACRB, GBI, DA, and APD. All that said, it needs to go faster. Which brings me to the, to the third sort of fundamental point and question, which is, how do we make it go faster? And Councilmember Hillis, to your point, at what point do we start? And using the term "we" broadly, in this case, actually, the Atlanta Citizen Review Board, when does ACRB start an investigation? And how do they start it? And that's where it gets a little bit tricky. I will note that on the process flow, in one of the footnotes, you will see that Chief Sherbaum made a pretty significant change in August, which was to actually start the OPS administrative investigation before the DA has closed their criminal investigation or the DA's investigation. So that's an entirely new process since August. And that has resulted in OPS files being closed in advance, well, much faster, first of all, under this new process, and in advance of the DA investigation, which will in fact allow the ACRB to start their investigation sooner. Now, they could start it, to your point. You could start it as soon as incident notification. That gets complicated then with what is the GBI's role? So I realize I'm laying out some questions here, not answers, but we're only two weeks into that. But to me, once we fix all the base fundamental elements through the MOU of the current process, we really need to focus on what's the new process going to be? How can it be faster? And how can ACRB start certain activities sooner without, you know, creating issues with particularly the GBI investigation, which is so critical early on? The good news is the GBI investigation is a lot faster than the Fulton DA investigation. And so there's, there's some things that you can, you can do in that case. So that's really all I wanted to mention, other than say that we are working collaboratively with both organizations. We've met a number of times. We talk, I talk every day with either the Director of the ACRB or the Chief of Police.
Thank you. Question, the Honorable Dustin Hillis.
Not directly related to the ACRB, but you mentioned the chief changing the OPS investigations in August. Does that apply retroactively as well to older cases or only new cases?
It applies first to new cases, as I understand it, but it is going backwards now to old cases. The problem is that you just dropped a bunch of work into the hopper and somebody has to, somebody has to do these investigations. So in conversations with the chief, they are feeding those investigations in. They can't all simultaneously just go because just like other parts of APD, they're resource constrained. But yes, so those will start flowing. And on the question of numbers, not only are there the three that just came over, there are six investigations, OPS investigations, that are in command review now. That's the final stage. Now, these are thick, so command review is not like an afternoon. And multiple commanders have to review it. But what I will say is that this freight train has taken a long time to get going for a whole variety of reasons. You will now seal, see case flow. You are seeing case flow. And our job is to figure out how do we get the freight train going much, much faster?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Reed, we would like to see you in 30 to 40 days and our staff will be in contact with you. Do you have any closing remarks?
No.
This meeting is adjourned.